Take it away, Mayor.
Roll call please, Russell.
Mayor McKay?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Schroeder? Councilmember Amundson?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
And Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
I think, uh, I think Councilmember Schroeder just, uh, just called in. Hang on a second.
Okay.
Uh, Vice Mayor Schroeder, are you there?
Hold on, I'm with, uh, Councilmember Schroeder on the phone, Russell.
Yes.
He said that, uh, she emailed you that the invitation never came through.
I just talked to him.
Oh, that she spoke to you?
We spoke on the phone, right, and she was...
Right, so she still doesn't have that, so I'm gonna give her the dial-in phone number.
Okay.
Alright, so I'm taking care of that right now.
Okay. I sent it to her also to her, uh, her private, uh, her private email.
So that might be Jim Albritt, and then who just called in?
Yeah, that is Jim, you're right.
Okay. You wanna stand for the pledge? I'll let Russell lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands... One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, Andy, I'm gonna pass it to you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor, and, and thank all of you for being here tonight. Uh, so far 2020 has been, uh, certainly a, a very difficult and challenging year for all of us. When we originally started on this process, we, we convened the Fire Assessment Review Committee, we hired a consultant, we, we kicked off the meetings, and the next thing we knew, we were all on, on lockdown. So, the calendar does march on. We tried to continue with our work, working with, uh, Mr. Wallace. In order to let the committee continue to have input, we formulated a survey that we, we sent out to all of you, which is used in his, in his research. And, uh, I'm gonna, before I turn it over to, to Chris Wallace, who'll do his presentation, I'm gonna ask that you all hold your questions until he completes the presentation, and then we can have a discussion as to whatever questions you may have. Alright?
I have a question before we start. Does anybody but me hear background noise?
I hear background noise.
Oh, Lord.
It, it's, it's coming and going, but what I would urge all of you, when you're not speaking, to, to mute your computers.
Sounds like a deal.
Okay. And on that note, uh, Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Um, alright, so now am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes, Chris, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, we'll just jump right into the slideshow presentation, and, uh, as the manager suggested, with these meetings particularly, it's hard to see everyone in these little tiny squares. So I'll go through the presentation. If there's something that you want me to come back to, please try to reference the slide number on the bottom right-hand corner of the, of the slide. I don't think this presentation's going to take too long, uh, but it's probably gonna be more of the questions than answers after the presentation. So with that, I will now start the slide, and trying to figure out how to take over the, uh, the screen, share screen. Here we go.
Chris, do you want me to, you want me to, I advance the slides for you, or?
Uh, I think I can get it once I get it up on the screen, but we'll see, Russell. I appreciate the, uh, the offer. So... Alright, uh, does everyone see, uh, the screen?
Not yet.
No, not yet.
Hmm.
Everything's been distributed also, uh, Chris, and everyone has received what you're gonna be seeing tonight.
Okay.
Should we print it off the other computer?
Lori had a question.
I just wondered if I should print it off the computer. I didn't wanna print it, but I can go run and print it off the other one. Or is it gonna be on a slide some...
I think it'll come up on the computer screen now. My computer was asking, I didn't realize it was asking me permission to share the screen, so let's see if we do.
There we go.
Okay.
Alright, so do you see it?
Yes, thank you.
Alright. Should be a little bit bigger now, hopefully. Alright, so this is just the title. Hopefully don't be any questions on it. So, um, the purpose of the methodology report is basically to do two things. To determine which properties in the town benefit from the fire assessment, and then how those costs will be fairly apportioned to each property. So the answer to the first question's pretty easy. Most properties benefit from having fire protection, including in the case of Southwest Ranches, some, uh, what would appear to be vacant property, but they have had fires in the past. The methodology is used from year to year as the costs change and properties are added, changed or removed, but the underlying methodology, uh, is continued to, uh, be used until you update it again. The methodology doesn't set the rates directly. Adopting this methodology doesn't set rates. That has to be done at a, a public meeting, but there will be notices given. We'll get to that later. Um, and then, uh, every year, you have to determine what your costs are in advance, and apportion them based upon what the tax roll is for that year. So it's not a one-off, a deal to get done. A brief history of the town's fire assessment. It started in the fiscal year 2002, although really the methodology was done in 2001. The assessment has occurred every year. The last time an assessment methodology was done was in 2011, for the 2012 fiscal year. It was done by a different firm. In fiscal year 2020, the town initially expanded the assessment to include agricultural properties used in a commercial manner by focusing on the tax rolls, uh, prepared by the Broward County Property Appraiser. Ultimately, this created some issues in the community and resulted in a scaled-back implementation pending a new fire assessment study, which is where we're at now. Subsequent to, uh, uh, the adoption of the assessment, the town established this committee, uh, which has been a help in a lot of ways, to assist with the evaluation of the assessment. I would say it's really, you know, it's unfortunate that COVID-19 had come up. We did have two meetings. I thought we got a lot out of them, but I think we probably would've had a little bit better meetings if we could've met in person. It's very difficult sometimes to meet separately like this. The biggest issue was how to handle agricultural structures that were charged commercial rates in fiscal year 2020, the current year. Um, in discussions with the, uh, committee, uh, we helped tone in on some issues. So agricultural lands that have commercial uses, such as retail or commercial nurseries, would continue to pay a commercial rate on otherwise assessable structures. And if I just go off on a little tangent here, none of this was unanimous. I think this is just the consensus that we got from, uh, talking with everyone. Second thing was, uh, uh, otherwise assessable structures like barns and stables would have the same burden as a residential structure, since the fire responses would be similar, but only one structure, uh, would be assessed on a parcel. Also, if there was already a house on that parcel, there would not be any more than one, uh, one assessment. So if you had a house and a barn, you would just get one assessment. If you had a house on one parcel and you had a, uh, barn on a separate legal parcel, you're gonna get billed for both of those separately unless you unify the title down at the property appraiser's office. And there's really not any avoiding that, that particular aspect. I think everyone else thought, uh, uh, the methods that were being used for other properties were fine. It mostly seemed like it was this issue regarding, uh, agricultural properties or, or vacant properties that maybe had barns on them. Uh, so, originally going down the path that everyone would pay a commercial rate or a reduced rate, uh, just didn't sit well. Um, but I think we found a way to try to make this more equitable for everybody. I mean, it does change who pays what, so some of those barns who were in stables that are pretty big wind up paying a lot less under this method, but that seemed to be the, the consensus for, uh, going forward. So, we look at fire call data, because this becomes the basis of what percentage of properties pay how much of the assessment. We look at five years of data from, uh, from the fire departments. They use the National Fire Incident Reporting System, affectionately called NIFRS. Using a longer period smooths out variations, particularly when you have, uh, uh, fire class codes that maybe you don't have a lot of, um, um, properties in them. You know, you don't have a lot of fire calls over five years, um, so you don't have hardly any over one year. And if you do it every year, it's really gonna go up and down and up and down, and property owners don't like that, and it's really particularly not fair in our opinion. So over that five-year period, there were 3,662 recorded unique incidents. After we strip out things that we can't assess for, and those were almost entirely EMS rescue calls, 718 of those properties were for fire or property-related calls. We had 60 of those calls that we couldn't assign, uh, by any type of research to any particular land use category or fire class code. So we had to throw those out because, uh, you know, we didn't know where, where they would go. Most of the time, this would've been along a major roadway in any of that. But, uh, sometimes if we could say, uh, that the fire was like, uh, maybe, uh, a car fire in front of a house, we assigned those calls to the residential property, because that seemed where the call was going to. Okay, so that, that left 658 calls that we could distribute to the various property classes. The database, the NIFRS database, contains a property use code that we then have to equate to the fire class code that's maintained by the property appraiser's office. There's a table for that, uh, translation, if you will, in the back of the report. And, uh, of course, we don't really know, have the details behind the last report that was done in 2011, but the institutional class, um, had the biggest decrease was, was there... Or increase, excuse me. So this is how it broke down, uh, from one study to the next. These are the, the current fire classes are in the left column, commercial, institutional, acreage, residential, warehouse, government exempt. Um, and so in our study, we have 12.7, 12.8% of the calls go to commercial, 22.5% go to institutional, uh, 5.47 go to acreage. Um, residential dropped down from 63% to 56%. The warehouse industrial dropped from, uh, 9.5 to 2.2. I would say, honestly, most of the time, this is counterintuitive to most people, and we did talk about this at one of the meetings, but warehouse industrial, uh, uses do not really generate a lot of calls for service. That usually surprises people. The government exempt had, uh, nothing in the old study. We assigned it a little, almost 1%, uh, because there were calls to government properties, which we cannot assess for. And so there you go. This is the total, uh, call distribution. And this is gonna determine how the costs get allocated to the, uh, the different categories. In other words, say, commercial, used to pick up 15% of the call, and now, uh, it's going to pick up 12% of the call. I do see a hand raised. We had agreed to, uh, wait until the slideshow's ended. There's only three or four more slides, so if this parish can wait until then, we, note the slide number if you have a question, and at the end, we'll come back to that slide, because I, I have a hard time doing this and monitoring it. If we were doing this live, it would be a little easier, so I'm not trying to be rude to anybody, but, uh, we did have, we did have those ground rules, but we'll come back to it. We're, we're gonna change the title, the, uh, what's called residential. Um, residential is basically a dwelling unit. But, um, we're gonna also include, going forward, if the, uh, council agrees to it, uh, to, uh, assess the structures, the, the agricultural structures, the barns and the stables. If they're otherwise assessable under the statute, they will pay the same as a residential unit if they do, if they occur on a lot that's not, also have a, a house on it. So the most you're gonna pay is one residential unit. If you have a house and three barns, you're gonna pay one residential unit. If you just have a house, you're gonna pay one residential unit. If you have a barn on a separate parcel that, that does not have a house, you're gonna pay a residential unit. So this had the effect of increasing the residential units, which now include, uh, uh, otherwise assessable farm structures, barns and such. Commercial property's pretty much what you think it would be, but it can also be, uh, property that's, uh, on agricultural lands that doesn't have an exemption that's being used for a commercial nursery, or there's some retail use. Uh, so if it's actually being used in a commercial manner, it's gonna pay a commercial rate based upon the square footage of the structures that would otherwise be assessable. Government just includes any developed property owned by the federal, state, or local government. Uh, and you're not gonna be able to assess those. Acreage is essentially undeveloped property, typical in the use for various purposes. The town assesses an acreage charge per acre for fire services. The land is agricultural or a big lot on a separate parcel. You know, or, you'll see that a lot in the Southwest Ranches, where you have a house on one piece of land, and then, uh, one looks to be just the, the other lot owned by the same house. Looks like it's being maintained. It's just a big yard. But they'll need to unify the title if they don't wanna pay the acreage charge, uh, on that property, because they are two legally separated parcels, so that, uh, that bears discussing. Institutional, this category usually includes nursing homes, substance abuse centers, healthcare facilities, houses of worship, uh, mausoleums. You have a big mausoleum in, in Southwest Ranches. Non-public schools, including, uh, charter schools or public schools, um, so they, they would not get assessed, uh, in various other uses. Sometimes when we don't have a lot of institutional, uh, and it's not that way here, sometimes it just helps to put this in with commercial, because the volatility in this institutional class can be pretty substantial from, from one assessment to the other. Warehouse and industrial, uh, is what you would think. It's usually, uh, storage units, self-storage units, uh, manufacturing, processing. You have, you have one property that is being classified as, um, uh, warehouse industrial, but it's probably more of a, or it's being classified as commercial, or no, I'm sorry, classified as institutional, but it really probably should be a warehouse industrial. Uh, and then mixed use isn't actually, uh, part of the methodology. It's just the acknowledgement that many properties have more than one use on them, so they are combined on the property appraisers' records. Uh, if you have, say, a house and a, a commercial, uh, building, or a warehouse, you might have a caretaker's apartment in a warehouse complex, uh, those get, uh, added together. So you'd have the residential component, and then the warehouse component in this example, and then the property appraiser adds them together and codes the S. We just throw that in because it's, it's an acknowledgement that for billing purposes, uh, that's just, that's just an easier way for them to do it. This is handled as exception files for the property appraiser and for the cities, and it takes a while to unpack these. You have a lot of, uh, S properties. Um, S can also just be an override to the property appraiser's office. So this past year, because of the, um, uh, uh, issue with the, uh, farm structures, the, the barns and the stables mostly, uh, they put this into the S category, um, as, as an override. But, so we had to work extensively with these files, because we had to unpack that information before we could come up with the total unit counts. So, this is for fiscal year '21. Um, this is the, uh, amount of square feet that we currently have, although the July rolls just came out. We did update for the June rolls, so this won't be substantially changed, if at all. But, uh, you'll notice that when we go to what it is currently, the, the commercial drops down. So keep in mind that the reason commercial dropped down was because we're no longer gonna be hitting up these stables and barns for, uh, commercial activity. There's still a few of them, but it dropped down quite a bit. You'll also notice that, uh, some of the other categories changed, and this also had to do with, uh, basically changing that, that dynamic, so it would be more in line with what I just described, where the houses and barns are assessed based upon that methodology. This is what, uh, we currently have, so you can, uh, I tried to get this all in one slide, but it really doesn't look that good, because it gets too small. So you'll have to look at these, uh, pages 11 and 12 together if you really care. But though, looking at them together and comparing the differences will illustrate, uh, why this methodology changed and moved within these categories. So then it becomes a question of, well, what are fire costs? So we have to separate the fire budget into two components essentially. Those costs that deal with fire, separated from those costs that deal with, uh, rescue. And I'll, I'm gonna use those terms, fire and rescue, but really, fire costs can also include anything that benefits property, because these assessments, um, have to benefit property. They can't benefit people. So anything that's associated with paramedics generally, you're not gonna be able to assess. But the fire department, you know, the overwhelming amount of what they do with fires is fire-related. But there are some calls for, uh, uh, calls for sprinklers which are initiated. They may have flooding because of that, and it's damaging the property. So those costs while they're, or those calls for service while they're very few of them, uh, we do throw them into the fire costs. So, one of the biggest parts of a fire budget, any public safety budget really, is the personnel. Um, we can go into reasons why we assign the personnel costs. If you're assigned to, I'll, I'll just simplify it. If you're assigned to a, a fire truck, then you're gonna be considered fire cost. If you're assigned to an EMS unit, you're gonna be assigned to the, uh, uh, non-fire cost. And the staffing is, you know, the, the problem with fire is, most of it's a standby service. Most of the time, you do not have fires. You may recall one of the things we discussed in one of the earlier meetings was, uh, when these, these assessments first go in, there's inevitably someone who's the longtime resident who will come to the meeting and says, "I've lived in, fill in the city name, for over 30 years, and I've never called the fire department once," which is probably a true statement. Most people will not have a, you know, a need for fire or rescue services. But their property is protected, uh, and of course, your insurance on your house is down when you have a good fire department. So even though you're not using it, um, you know, you do benefit from it, and the courts have held such. Um, the operating, there are some operating costs which are not, uh, apportioned out. They're directly assigned. For instance, medical supplies, even though some of those may be used on the BLS engines, uh, basic life support on the, uh, engines, um, or even ALS, uh, support on the engine. Uh, we just assigned all the medical supplies to, uh, the EMS units, because clearly EMS costs don't, like, medical supplies don't benefit property. Um, the direct costs and indirect costs of the assessments can be recovered. Volunteer fire costs in your case are being recovered. There's an administrative overhead cost that's being assigned to it, and all that becomes the cost of the fire assessment. So we break it down into fire and EMS. There's a table in the report that shows you how we did that. Uh, and the town's practice has been to recover 100% of the fire protection costs in the town. Um, so, uh, that, I guess you'll, you'll, you decide that every year. This assessment methodology doesn't determine how much you collect from people, or how much you assess people. It just guides you into how you can assess them. So you wanna charge 30% of the cost, you can do that, but you can't go over 100% and you have to ag, or segregate these, these funds when you get that close, and I believe Marty does that. So, this is just a forecast of what we think the fire budget may be, uh, and that's just a big guess, because you have contractual relationship with another city. But based upon, uh, uh, certain parameters, uh, this was just done for planning purposes. You know, this doesn't get cheaper. It all gets more expensive over time. But we're not assessing these costs. This is something you have to look at every year as you're developing the budget. This goes hand in hand with your budget development. So whatever your actual, well, actual, whatever your estimated budget costs are for the next year, uh, that's what you have to work with, and we've given a template for you to be able to do that. It's a little bit more complicated in your case, because you have, uh, the Davie fire budget, the Davie administrative costs. Davie actually has a separate budget for you for, for the, uh, Southwest Ranches, but they also have a contract amount, uh, which is basically the overhead command staff of the, uh, fire department. So we have to allocate out the, uh, total contract costs, not what the town has in its budget for the operations of the equipment and the manning of the equipment in, in your town. Um, and so that's it. You're gonna be quickly going up in, in price, but, you know, you'll, you'll negotiate whatever you can negotiate with the provider of these services. So this is just an illustration. If we were to take, uh, the costs to be distributed, um, this is how, uh, they would go. Uh, you see the total number of units, depending upon what they are. Um, the, the percentage apportionment is the percentage of the call distribution that we talked about earlier. This shows you how much you would generate by each class and what the rate per unit would be in each class. From that, we would, uh, back out exemptions that you have. So there'll be acreage exemptions. You have a handful of residential exemptions, mostly for totally permanently disabled veterans. And then the government property is just totally exempt. So the bottom-line number that you would realize, as you can see, it's about $170,000, $137,000 difference. Every year, you're gonna go through this, as you have been, figuring out what your costs are and how you distribute them. So, uh, just to compare, uh, the current rate for residential is 523. The illustrated rate is 544. Part of this is just an increase in expected budgets. The two savers are the industrial warehouse. That call volume dropped down to probably what it is in most cities. And the acreage dropped down too. Um, so, there are winners and losers in this, as, as always happens when you go back and redo the methodology. But, uh, that's the, that's the long and short of it. So, uh, what, what happens next, uh, if we don't all get, uh, you know, shot, is every year, the town council has to adopt a preliminary assessment resolution that provides notices for next year's rates and the date, place, and time of the public hearing on the assessment. This occurs on the trim notice under chapter 197 of the Florida statutes. Uh, and this also happens generally in July. It's the initial notice, but you have to do it by, uh, you know, the end of July, first couple of days into August. Changes a little bit every year. Uh, the notice will be along with all the other property taxes and assessments that, uh, are applied to a property. The final assessment resolution and public hearing on the assessment is mid-September. Has to be, uh, held by, uh, the middle of September, the 15th. Because of the notice requirements, there's usually only, you know, two to five days that you can have that hearing. Sometimes it's part of the regular budget process. Uh, sometimes it stands alone because of the timing of the notices. And at the public hearing, affected property owners, actually, anyone can speak, but I don't know why you would show up if you didn't have property, but I've had that happen. I've had people complain about an assessment and they weren't even being assessed. Um, the things people, uh, really have the right to come and contest on the assessment, they can come and say that their property doesn't benefit from the assessment. And so they would make the argument of why their property didn't benefit from the assessment, which is to say they don't benefit from fire service. That's where the people who come up and say, "I've lived here 30 years. Why am I paying for something I've never used?" So I don't really have a good answer for that, or the name, "Well, let's hope you never use it." And the other part is, and it usually is where most of the discussion has, is, was my property fairly apportioned? So, uh, you will come across from time to time a property owner who, uh, has some bizarre situation that you just have to kinda try to negotiate with them and find what's fair. We've had to do that in the past. It's a lot of that in Davie. I don't think so much in Southwest Ranches. Um, and so the, uh, uh, town council during this hearing really kinda sits as what we used to call the equalization board. They hear all the comments, all the suggestions, and then they consider whether the assessment rule needs to be adjusted based upon what they heard. Assuming it goes forth, uh, adjusted or not, um, the notices are sent over to the property appraiser's office, who then passes them off to the tax collector, who then bills, uh, in November, well, the bills go out in October. Most of them are paid in November, but, uh, I know from painful experience with some of the stuff in Southwest Ranches, there's a number of people who, for whatever reason, do not pay it, uh, in November, so they lose their discounts or pay penalties. But eventually, it gets paid by June or July, because the, uh, tax collector will actually sell tax certificates, so the city gets its money one way or the other. And with that, I will, um, I'm gonna leave this up and, um, put it back on the title real quick. And, um, then I'll just open up the floor. And, um, uh, Russell, you still with us?
Yes, sir.
I think Lori, Lori had her hand up first.
Yeah, but, yeah, I know Lori did, and there may be others. I don't see, I only see like five people.
I've got a couple of questions myself, but let's let Lori go first.
I'm gonna let the chair decide, uh, who goes in, in what order, if that's okay.
Okay.
So is it...
I lost all my faces.
So is, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how the structure of this meeting, if this is a committee meeting, or if it's a council meeting.
Is it my turn to ask a question?
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Steve.
So is this, is this a council meeting, Mayor? Are you running this meeting?
Am I allowed?
Or is this a committee meeting that I'm running?
You know, I, I'm not sure.
of the council is going to run it, but if you want to take over as the head of that committee?
I'm fine either way. I just didn't want to. I, I thought it was a committee meeting that you all, you all voted in, so I assumed it was a council meeting.
Is Keith there? Can we ask Keith?
Go ahead. Well, ask Andy actually, if you want to.
Yeah, Russell, please advise what you noticed the meeting as. Is it a council meeting?
It was, it was, it was noticed more as a joint, a joint meeting, both the council and the, and the board.
Well, if it's, if it's workshop and the council trumps the committee, so Doug would be the chair of this meeting.
Okay. I don't mind letting Steve as the chair, the, uh, to kind of take over for a bit, if that's okay, Steve.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, Lori, can you go ahead and, um, present your questions?
Hello? Anybody talking?
Yeah, we're waiting for Lori.
I'm on. Can you hear me, Doug?
I can hear you.
There you go. Can you hear us, Lori? We can hear you.
All my faces went away, except my own. I don't know why. Um, the one question I had when, um, was, uh... Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear you, Lori.
Yes. Doug, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
She can hear us.
She's intermittent.
It was one of the, uh...
Well, let's move it.
When one, Chris showed, Chris showed the amount of fire calls. These are residential properties. I know that commercially, you look on a square footage page, look at them for intensity, or is the intensity of a commercial call, the of a residential call for fire the same?
Okay, from a call, he's breaking up. I can't hear.
I did, I did hear you, but you were breaking up.
Yep.
Okay, wait.
Chris, I think the question, Lori, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the question was, it's the intensity of all these things.
There's a lot of background noise on here.
Yeah, it sounds like someone has a television on in the background. That's what it sounds like to me.
Yep.
So again, if you're not speaking, please go on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
I, I was calling your portable. My question is... Me?
I...
Hello?
I lost her.
You're, you're, you're in and out. We can hear you some and then some not, so you've got a...
Doug, I was just calling your portable to ask, let you ask my question. I've got my...
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Actually, Russell, uh, as it relates to some of the panelists, it's a bandwidth. If you can just turn off their video, the audio will work perfectly and then turn back their video in a minute. So all you have to do is just end their video for a second and we'll be able to hear them.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's an issue of it's individuals. So if I, okay, I'll go ahead and, uh, I'll stop, uh...
Can you hear me?
I'll stop Lori's video for one second. I'm trying to stop her video. It's still showing. Lori, can you hear us?
She's calling my cell right now. Hey Lori, one second. Uh, you, you'll be able, hold on one second. Lori, one second.
The question I'm trying to ask is the...
Yeah, we're perfect, Lori. We can hear you perfectly. So he kind of turned off your video. No, he can hear you on the computer, so just, I'm going to hang up myself.
Sure. Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. Bye. Okay, what I wanted to know is the intent property greater than the intent... fire call at a residential property, or are they the same?
You're on mute, Chris.
Okay. Um, so no, we did not, uh, use a, uh, an intensity methodology, which basically looks at how much equipment, how much time was spent on any particular fire. Um, you know, we feel, and that's one way of doing it, but here you have...
I wasn't trying to...
I didn't hear that. All right. Um, so hopefully you guys can still hear me. I think the, the problem may be on Lori's end with, uh, the bandwidth, as Keith said. Uh, no, this methodol- the methodological approach...
I was fine. Now, I mean, I can hear you.
Okay.
I just wanted to know, is the intensity of...
Well, that's a question really for the fire department and I think it depends on the fire and the call. You know, certainly you can have a very intense fire at a house and a very minor fire at a warehouse or vice versa. Uh, that can be all over the place depending upon the type of fire it is. Um, I'm, I've seen fires where there, because of, there were tires on the fire, they lasted for days, but those happen very infrequently. So this methodology just apportions the cost out based upon the total calls for service. Um, and does not look at how much time was spent on a fire or how many personnel were spent there as well.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Fred, looked like you had a question?
Okay, yes. Chris, on page four of your slide presentation...
All right. Okay.
Uh, I don't see it, but on bullet three, you described it well, but for the public, you might reword it. It sounds like you're choosing one agricultural structure on the property, and I thought we were trying to say per parcel. And when you went over it, you, you, you said it real well. You said only one structure would be assessed. It's really the parcel would be assessed. Anyway, it's not a thing, but, but the wording is...
Well, no, I think it's an, it's an important point actually, because we are assessing parcels. Every assessment is done on a parcel level, so... And honestly, with these slideshows, you kind of see this one's filled up the screen, so we kind of sometimes take a little liberty with, with words. But to be perfectly clear, and we think it's clear in the, in the full report...
Yes, yeah, the report was fine. It's just that, uh, and I think we're losing Circle S, but in Circle S, they have a lot of structures. So it's the parcel that's assessed, not one structure, in my opinion.
Right, and then they're, correct. And in their case, they're handled as a commercial activity, so the square footage of otherwise assessable structures is going to be added together as a commercial activity.
Okay. All right, that was important.
So it, it, yeah, if, uh, let me reiterate it again for the record. Hopefully it's being recorded. If, this new, this new method, uh, done with the committee's help and with input from the staff, if you have a house, you're going to have one, you know, one residential unit. We, we stuck with residential unit, by the way, because we felt that would be easier for the property appraiser to stick with their R code. So we'll give them a list of the, uh, new properties that are being assessed. So if you have a house, you get one unit. If you have a barn that's otherwise assessable and it's on a separate parcel because you chose to do it that way, it also is going to get assessed. If you have a house and a barn on one parcel, you're only going to get one unit assessment.
I understand it perfectly well. I'll just make it a comment for the slide for the general public. Okay, on page, but, yes, sir, on page five of your slideshow.
All right, I'm there now.
All right, I'm not. Can you pull it back up?
Well...
No. All right, your last, your last bullet, I don't think it ends. Look at the last bullet.
Oh, yeah, the largest increase in effort, you know. Yeah, I'm sorry, we made that change, uh, late in the day today.
That's fine.
But you'll see it on the, yeah, you'll see it on the next slide. Yeah.
All right, that's all, that's all I had for the slides.
Yeah, it got cut off. Uh, Chris, read it so they could fill it in on, uh, slide five. Uh, it said was in, in warehouse industrial, warehouse slash industrial at the bottom.
Yeah, here, I don't know, I must have had, deleted that somehow. I'm putting it back on the, uh, slide. It was there, I don't know how it left. All right.
Slide five.
Can you guys see this? I don't know if I'm still sharing my screen or not.
Chris, I'm sharing, Chris, I'm sharing my screen.
I have it on one of my monitors anyway. Yes, I can see it.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Steve?
Anybody else have any questions?
I do, the mayor, the mayor does.
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple as well.
Yeah, page seven. You have mobile homes and mobile home trailers. Why?
Yeah, well, you do have a, a handful of mobile homes, so they actually count as a dwelling unit.
We have mobile homes in Southwest Ranches? Where are they located? Because I don't know where they are.
Uh, yeah, they're usually, they're usually on a, uh, for lack of a better description, of like a, a farm parcel where you have someone like a caretaker watching over the nursery or something like that. You also, and these would be dwelling units. You also have, uh, I'm like, I guess manufactured housing would be a better way, that, that are being used as offices or, uh, in a commercial activity, but...
Okay, but is that along with, uh, residents on the property too or not? Is this solo, the only residence?
All right, well, yeah, you, you see it both ways, but if it's there and it's being used as a dwelling unit, so if you have a house and then next to it you have a mobile home for whatever reason, they're going to pick up, uh, two dwelling units.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and also just because they may not be out there today, that doesn't mean they won't be out there tomorrow and should be picked up, uh, at any point when you have them.
I was under the impression we only allow those for like, you said, barn-related stuff or caretaker or something like that, but not as a sole residence on a, on a property.
Well, like, uh, it's interesting because it brings up this, this phenomenon that happens, like, like you know that sometimes people do things that they're not allowed to do. So the question becomes, well, should you still get money out of them for the fire assessment or should you just fight with them in court and get them off the property? It's up to the city. But suffice it to say, there are people out there every day who do things on their property that they're not supposed to.
Yeah. I was under the impression we didn't allow it, but that's just a mistake.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman Jim Albritton? Mr. Chairman Jim Albritton? Mr. Chairman, Steve?
Yep, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, uh, Steve, uh, the papers that were sent out here, I have these, and I have the committee handwritten survey responses and stuff. Have they, have you talked about those at all?
We haven't covered them in this meeting. They were part of the report that was sent out. Um, it is an interesting thing that some of the conclusions that were drawn from the meeting are different than the voting that was in those, in the survey. Did you have a question about that?
Yes. The survey said one thing and the response said that it was something different, so would that be changed when the print comes out, the actual print comes out?
Yeah, Chris, how did you handle those? What's the difference between the two?
All right, well, I have to make a general statement, that the survey, while interesting, really isn't part of the methodology. Uh, we don't want it to look like, uh, the survey dictated what the methodology was, but we did want to acknowledge that there was a survey done. So the survey that went out was a Survey Monkey, online survey, and, uh, of those who responded to it, there is a separate attachment in the back. One person handwrote their response and turned it in, so that was just reproduced, we retyped their responses. So in the back of the report, it deals with the, uh, the survey as a, as an attachment to the report, but not included with the report proper. Uh, you have two, you have two responses. You have a, a co-mingling of the online responses and then because there was no real way to show, uh, the response of that one person who handwrote their comments, we decided to just include their comments verbatim, mostly verbatim.
They think, uh, Mr. Wallace, the thing, Jim Albritton, the thing is that the response says that there exists an assessment for each D U R, uh, assessment. So there's two different, uh, uh, things that are shown on each last, I guess, three sections that are there. The, the response, it was not, uh, or the...
Okay, Jim, I, I, I don't know if anyone else, but it was breaking up a bit, but I think I got the gist of it. Um, this, this has to do with, uh, it sounded like it had to do with the concept of, should you pay more than one dwelling unit on a parcel? For instance, if you had a duplex, should you pay for two dwelling units? Or if you had a granny flat and a house, should you pay for two dwelling units? You currently, your current methodology and, uh, tact is you do pay for however many dwelling units you have on a house. And it, if you had an apartment building, each of the apartments would actually do that, but you don't have any of those. Um, so it's a, it's problematic from, uh, an equity point of view and from past findings to not assess multiple dwelling units and multiple fee. Uh, they all represent a separate identifiable risk for fire. So, um, you know, the only thing we differentiated on that was, uh, based upon comments from the committee and otherwise, that didn't appear that there was an additional risk for a barn structure. In fact, we didn't really find a lot of barn fires per se. It's not to say there aren't any, they just weren't coded that way by the fire department by and large. Um, uh, I don't know if that answered, uh, Jim's question or not.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Uh, in particular, it, the, it's to some partial, pointing to one dwelling unit. According to the survey, was that they were against an assessment for each dwelling unit on the property, but the survey shows that it was the opposite. So something's wrong with the survey. The survey says that they were for charging each dwelling unit by fifty percent as opposed to thirty-seven percent. So there's two different things that need to be straightened out, I think.
Okay, we'll look into it. What was the thirty, refresh my memory on what the thirty-seven percent and the fifty percent were.
All right, on question two, sometimes a parcel has more than one dwelling unit. It's on page two.
I'm reading it. Oh, I see what you're saying as far as the percentage responses, uh, the committee responses.
They don't match what's written below the actual, uh, thing that we were supposed to, it doesn't match.
You're saying it doesn't match the question or it doesn't match the report?
Right. It doesn't match the report. The report says they were against changing, uh, against charging an assessment, and the survey says that they were for charging assessment. There's two different ones, it's the same question.
I see what you're saying. Well, I definitely will clear that up.
Okay. That's for three of those questions.
Yeah, I think what we were trying to say in, uh, we wanted to acknowledge that there was, uh, there were some that did not feel there should be multiple dwelling unit assessments, but we'll clear it up in the report. Thank you.
So, so we've got some feedback there, but I, I think, I think what was going on there, Chris, is one is the notes from the committee meeting when we met, and the other is the results from the survey, and the comments in the committee meeting were different than the results in the...
The comments for whatever committee meeting.
And, um, so... All right, on question two, sometimes a parcel has more than one dwelling unit. It's on page 12.
I'm reading it, see, oh, I see what you're saying, as far as the percentage responses, uh, the, the committee responses.
They don't match what's written below the actual, uh, thing that we were supposed, it doesn't match.
You're saying it doesn't match the question, or it doesn't match the report?
Right. It doesn't match the report. The report says they were against changing, against charging an assessment, and the survey says that they were for charging assessment. There's two different ones, it's the same question.
I see what you're saying. Well, I definitely will clear that up.
Okay. That's for three of those questions.
Yeah, I think what we were trying to say in, uh, we wanted to acknowledge that there was, uh, there were some that did not feel there should be multiple dwelling unit assessments, but we'll clear it up in the report. Thank you.
So, so, we've got some feedback there, but I, I think, I think what was going on there, Chris, is one is the notes from the committee meeting when we met, and the other is the results from the survey, and the comments in the committee meeting were different than the results in the other committee meeting. And, um, so, um, I, I actually do, I have a couple, I, I had a question there, and I appreciate that that was, that was cleared up. Um, and, um, I just a couple other questions, not, nothing major, but on, um, somebody, I'm getting a lot of feedback from somebody else's, uh, sound.
Steve, if I can chime in here, I think the issue might be, I think Lori has called in, but is also still on the computer call, and so I think that could be causing some of the feedback. I have her on mute as a panelist, um, but I don't know if her speakers are giving her sound, so I don't know if we can try to
I muted myself, but I'm on the phone.
I, I understand, but I think that's what's causing some of the feedback, because your speakers are still feeding back through the system.
Okay, let me turn, I'll turn the computer off.
Please, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
How to mute her phone, so she can mute and unmute it.
The phone, the phone isn't, the phone isn't the issue, Keith, that they're watching, if they have it, if they're on the phone, but then they're also have their computer speakers on, that's the feedback loop.
Okay, but my computer is muted.
Okay.
All right, um, just a, just a couple of, just a couple of questions. Um, the, on, I think it's, uh, I think it's slide 11 or 12, um, here, let me find out the slide number. It's slide number 11. Yeah, that, um, that number of parcels for government shows 221 parcels. Um, can you clarify what those parcels are?
Sure, it's a bunch of stuff. Um, it can be canal right-of-ways, it could be easements that the city owns, or county owns, or the state owns, and it could be actual, you know, city hall. We can give you a list of those if you want to see them.
No, I don't.
It includes the Central Broward Drainage District and South Broward Drainage District as well.
Great.
Right, there's, there's a lot of it. At the end of the day, though, uh, there's not a lot of calls for service to it, and we're not going to be able to assess them in any event. But yeah, there's a lot.
I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure it was accurate, that's all. Um, and then there was on slide five, and you addressed it a little bit, there are these 60 calls that were not able to be properly designated. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't have a designation to where they could be able to determine which one of those, uh, property types they should be assigned to. Um, i- is that, do you feel that that is because of the location where they occurred? Or do you feel like there's some improvement that we can do in recording these calls to be able to get more accurate information in the future, based on what you saw?
Uh, that's a good question, because the data is only as good as the people in the field writing the reports of. Uh, you'll find in, in each fire department, and this is not a stab at the fire personnel at all, you can have two people who, uh, see the same fire, but will code it differently. And, you know, there's just no way of resolving that, but sometimes they don't put enough information on the report to identify exactly where it occurred. Um, and a lot of that just happens to be on the street, so if someone's traveling down, say, uh, um, Griffin Road, and they're on the, uh, north side of the road, and they pull off because they had a fire in their car, and we're not really going to be able to assign that to any particular, uh, land use. Um, so, a lot of these have, uh, uh, addresses assigned to them, so it's on a street and a road, but they tell you, when you look at a map, you say, well, it's clearly a residential neighborhood, so we're going to call that a residential call for service. But the major roads make it a little bit harder to do, uh, so we don't, we don't, we don't code those, because we can't really state with any kind of certainty that it was on this land use or, or that land use. But if we could make a good case for it being on one, uh, you know, on a very likely than the not, then we, we included it. But so those 60 calls, this was no hope for them, because there wasn't anything that, uh, not enough specific information, but more than, more than, often than not, Steve, it was just that they were on a major road and, you know, we couldn't do anything with it.
Right, right, which, which is, you know, it's understandable, I'm not, I'm not throwing stones, uh, there either. I, I do think, um, just for the administration, that there may be an opportunity to kind of reinforce the importance of logging that properly, um, if it's possible. There are situations where that may not be possible.
Uh, yeah, over the years, I have actually, uh, when I've come across what I thought was, you know, maybe the fire department needs a little training to standardize the reports. Uh, I've had the conversations with, uh, fire chiefs, whether or not they do it or not, I don't know, but if I think it's bad enough, um, you know, I, I, I do bring it to their attention. And there have been many instances where I felt, uh, that they actually needed to pull the actual report to see if we could identify some of them. So that's a lot of work for the fire department, and they're usually not real happy about doing it. I didn't have that need in this instance, but we have before, asked them to, you know, we'll give them a list of calls and say, see what you can do with these, what, what were these really? And they come back, and many of them, they can resolve, you know, we're not going to be able to resolve it, but, you know, they have the reports, and sometimes they can. We do try to emphasize with the departments how important this standardized data is, but, uh, you know, we work very closely and intimately with this data, and I can tell you that, uh, you can have, uh, there's discretion in how they code it, uh, and we just have to go with what they coded. We don't, we don't put ourselves in the shoes of firefighters.
No, no, yep, yep, I understand. All right, so I just, I just have one last, one last question, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to the next questioner. Um, on slides 11 and 12, I think one of the, one of the key, one of the key things that is changing is the number of dwelling units. So on slide 12, it shows the prior or current, we're at 2612 dwelling units. On slide 11, it's showing 2886 dwelling units. So, um, I'm, I'm trying to come to, I, I'm sure it's accurate, but I'm, I'm thinking maybe if you could put some, some meat on those bones there to explain that, because what's me is thinking that some of those barns that stood on their own before are now being combined with a dwelling unit, you know, as per our direction. Um, so I would, that would actually reduce the number, and yet this number is going up. Um, and I know there's other situations where there may be some barns on parcels that maybe are being counted, but I, I can, can you, can you talk to that number? I want, I just want to feel better about that number and understand it.
Okay, well, I'm, well, I'm sure there are, you know, a handful of new homes in your na, in your city, certainly there's not 200 of them. Uh, so what that mostly represents is kind of what you were saying, they were, these were parcels that were never assessed before, they were attempted to be assessed, but they actually weren't assessed, that had a otherwise assessable structure on it, and now we'll be picking up this one dwelling unit, even though it's, we, we redefine the term of what residential is to include, uh, parcels that have a, an assessable, uh, farm-like structure on them. And now they're going to pay the same rate as a dwelling unit will. So, yeah, it added a few, you know, a few new taxable, or not taxable, but assessable properties to the rolls. Likewise with commercial, it's like, well, you didn't really lose any commercial, but what you did was, you know, that, that square footage went down, because we took out, um, all those stables and barns that this year were being assessed as commercial structures. So some of that moved into the residential component, because now it's like, all right, well, we're not going to charge you as a commercial property, you know, a commercial rate, but you still have to pick up, uh, one or two, depending upon, sometimes these stables actually have a dwelling unit in it, so they'll pick up, uh, the dwelling unit, uh, and, um, you know, that moved out into the R category as well. So a lot of those commercial, uh, parcels, or all those commercial parcels that were, uh, stables, but not really, uh, a, a big commercial activity, and we spent a lot of time on that, and I want to thank Fred for his help on that, because at the last meeting that we all had, I said I was going to need your help on what you thought was commercial and what wasn't, so, because we needed to be able to define this a little bit better. Um, so some of these categories are just things being pulled out from square feet, and now they're dwelling units. Um, but dwelling units is kind of misnomer, so if anyone has a nice little term to call that, we're, we're all ears, because, you know, we bannered that around a little bit. But it's basically the 500 and something dollar charge that, uh, that you'll pay for having, you know, a risk on your property, um, be it a barn, or a house, or a house in a barn, you know, you only got to pay one dwelling unit. I am, I am a little
Go ahead, I, I didn't hear it. They're, they're dwelling units for beautiful horses.
Well, uh, some of those barns are nicer than, uh, some houses, so, uh, I wouldn't feel too bad for some of those, uh, uh, horses, but yeah, uh, they have been relocated, um, as far as reassigned into the categories. So some of this is a change in definition, uh, some of it's a change in approach based upon the committee's feedback, um, and there you go, but that is, that, yeah, I, Marty questioned that a lot, too, uh, but that, that's what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, because if you, if you, Steve, if you go to the last slide, which is 16, you will see that those increased residential units was able to lower last, well, 16, not 70. Uh, maybe you want to circle, you got your pen. Um, it, it created a smaller increase of only $21.30, you know, with a higher denominator, uh, you get to spread the cost over more units. Uh, that's a good point out, uh, I wanted to let you know. It was 274 more units, that's what, uh, the question is. Good catch there, and observation, Steve.
Great, thanks. Um, any other questions from anyone else?
Yes, I have a question, it's Lori, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, for example, the property across the street from me, Rancho Holdings, and the folio is 514-002-010281. That property has a barn and a residential dwelling unit on it, and I looked, um, at its, uh, tax bill from last year, and there was no fire assessment on it, but they actually rent out, or they have rented out, um, a small efficiency or apartment, one-bedroom apartment, something over there that has a barn, but yet it had no fire assessment. Could someone tell me if Fred or maybe Chris looked at it, will that parcel be assessed a fire fee?
Yeah, you know, I actually came across, uh, a handful of properties that looked like they should have a, an assessment or a different assessment. And, um, I'm sorry, Lori, I'm not able to look up that parcel, so if you, can you read me the parcel number again?
It has a barn and a residential, a small one. Um, recently it had, uh, a man, a woman, and a small child there. It's had two guys that do the beekeeping and the ground, that kind of thing, but there is a rental unit there and a barn.
Yeah, they should pay, if it's all, if it, if it's all in one parcel, next year they're going to pay for one dwelling unit.
Okay, but will someone verify that that's on it?
Yeah, I will, I, yeah, I will definitely follow up on it, uh, tonight, and, and ask Holly about it, if it's not one that we've already told her. I mean, I don't, I don't memorize folio numbers, but there were, there were a few, you know, we worked with Holly for years, and anytime we find something that looks a little funky, we send it over to the property appraiser's office, and they always immediately run it down. So, um, they're always a big help that way.
Chris, we will address that at the July 9th meeting, when we adopt the methodology, July 9th meeting.
Okay, because it wouldn't be listed on there yet, but anyway, I'd like to know about that. Also, there, the only duplexes I'm aware of are on Hancock Road, and I think there's four buildings with two units in each. Are they going to be assessed one fire fee?
No, they wouldn't be assessed, if it's a duplex and they're actually separate dwelling units, they're going to pick up, uh, if it's, if they have a, one duplex on a parcel, they'll pick up two dwelling units.
No, I think they have four. So, it's the only one I'm aware of, it's on, they've been there forever.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're right, they would pick up, uh, that, it's kind of an anomaly out in Southwest Ranches, that's why I remember it, a lot of cities have a lot of that kind of stuff, but yeah, you're right, and they, they currently pick up four, and we're recommending that they pick up four, uh, in this methodology.
Each building, so even though it's eight, it would be four units, correct?
Well, I, let me rephrase it, not, not to be particular, but, yes, because this can actually be a problem in real life. If they're four, if they're four, um, if, if the quadruplex is what most people call it, right, so those would be four dwelling units, if they're actually able to use them separately as a dwelling unit, as we define that in, in your code, um, then they're going to pay for four, uh, dwelling units.
Okay, I don't know, I mean, I think that there are four buildings with two uni, you know, it's four separate duplexes, so it's four buildings that might be dwelling units, I don't know if they take the world out, but I was curious about that. And also, one of the things, when, um, you were talking about some of those, um, issues of fire that you couldn't account for, I, I know one time when my mother was alive, she fell and broke her hip, and when we called 911, you know, we had a fire truck and a police car and a rescue truck, we were glad to have them all, but I wonder sometime, is that kind of what happens, you know, because the first one comes here until, you know, the rescue gets here, and is that part of it?
Well, that, yeah, well, that happens, the, the fire truck exists, if, if I could just go back, because this is actually an important part of our analysis, and people forget how fire used to work in Broward County, but if, I, I came down here in 83, and what used to happen is, cities had their own fire departments, and some of them also had, you know, EMS services with paramedics, so they could provide advanced life support. But most cities relied upon Broward County Commission to provide, uh, the paramedic services. So what would happen is, if you were in one of the, one of these cities, you'd have the fire truck, would, would sometimes be, would frequently be the first response to, uh, an EMS call, and we're not talking fire here, I'm just addressing how it used to be, or rescue calls. So if the, uh, if the county paramedic units were tied up, which was frequent, the fire department would send out their fire truck, and on these fire trucks, uh, by law, they could not perform ALS, Advanced Life Support Services, because they did not have what's called a certificate of necessity. They could only provide basic life support services. And because fire trucks are usually idle, it's not usually fires, they were frequently the, the first response. Now, sometimes maybe they also got dispatched, uh, you know, concurrently, they would get dispatched from, uh, Broward County, uh, paramedic services, so then they would show up and take over the care of the patients that the firefighters had initiated, if they had gotten that far, and those, the paramedics could actually start doing things that the firefighters legally couldn't do. And then, believe it or not, uh, the county commission had, uh, contracts with ambulance transport companies, so, uh, they had two, if I remember correctly, they had two ambulance companies, and they divvied up the territory, and so after the Broward County, um, uh, paramedics finished with them, they'd put them in an ambulance and off they'd go with the private company. So what you had was a lack of continuity of care, started with BLS firefighters, then paramedics, and then, uh, ambulance, uh, people who would tow them to the hospital. That changed the years later, I won't go into details why, it changed for the better, I mean, it didn't get cheaper, but it changed for the better.
I'm, I'm, I'm real familiar with that. What I'm, I'm just not talking about back in the 80s, I'm talking about, uh, two years ago, is sometimes maybe those calls are, you know, the closest ones, the fire truck, and then EMS arrives, or the police, whatever, and I just wondered if they were part of the 60 you couldn't identify, that's fine.
Uh, I would, yeah, I don't, I don't know for certain, because we weren't able to identify them, because there wasn't a specific address, but my guess would be, uh, no. Number one, we would have thrown out the call anyway, because it was an EMS call and not a fire call.
Okay.
But if there was a fire involved, then we would have, like, you know, kept it, but it probably wouldn't have been even considered because of that.
Okay, the other thing, what residential exemptions are you talking about by the property appraiser for an exemption from the fire fee?
Okay, so we're not talking about a, right, we're not talking about an exemption from, uh, uh, property taxes. The town of Southwest Ranches exempts permanently totally disabled, uh, veterans from the assessments.
Okay.
Those are the ones, you know, you don't have a lot of them. That, that, those are the ones, you know, you don't have a lot of them, actually, for the size of your town, I'm actually surprised that you do have one, you know, relative to your population.
Eleven.
Okay, but that, that's not a property appraiser exemption, that's a town exemption.
Correct. When we're talking about exemptions in this assessment, uh, sometimes they're related to the exemptions that the property appraiser gives, particularly for agricultural exemptions.
Well, agriculture-
But we're talking about exemptions that the town, the town is giving for the fire assessment, not for property tax purposes.
Okay, but what, what I think was the slide said the property appraiser, but it's the town. And also, ag is not an exemption, it's a classification, but that, that's here, not here, there. The other thing I wanted to ask is, when you talked about commercial versus residential, and I know commercial will get a square footage, but is there any data to support that an intensity of a fire at a commercial par- parcel exceeds the intensity of a fire at a residential parcel?
Well, I would say the responses are different, uh, because of the, uh, size of the buildings. But that's a question more for the firefighter. We didn't think in, in this particular case, because you don't really have a lot of, uh, commercial, and you don't have that many calls for service over three years, but that was really, uh, something you wanted to go down and do. But it is a way, you know, there are, uh, every once in a while, you do see that method where they look at, uh, the responses and apportion it out that way. My feeling is that because this stuff is mostly idle, the fire services, uh, you know, when you, when you have a structure like that, that it's rare, but they do happen. Uh, but what you're really paying for is the, at the end of the, at the end of the day, you're really paying for the ability to have fire services to provide to your property, because most of these properties do not get a call for service. Yeah, that goes towards the comment I made earlier about the guy who always shows up and says he's lived there third of the years. But they do benefit from it, and, you know, once you thought about it, you, you know, you pay for fire insurance and your insurance on your home, but have you really ever had a fire? But you carry it, because if you need it, it's there, and that's the same for the, uh, equipment and personnel on it. But yeah, though, there are, there are, there are different response protocols for different types of fires on different types of structures. But that's really more of a question for the fire chief than me.
Great, thank you. Hey, um, Fred, do you have a question?
One, to answer Doug's response, there's two home trailers in my neighborhood. Uh, one that family lives in while they're building the house. The other, George Morris, who's on, on site, can answer for me, but I believe, uh, a house under construction. He had a night guard or someone on the property. The trailer's still on the property, which was a separate issue, but I'm one to live or let live, I don't turn them in. But there's two home trailers within, uh, a baseball throw of my house, back to Doug. I have a lot of comments on the survey, which I thought we would wait till we did it in order. And I'm not in charge, but I might want to remind everyone, it's eight nineteen, and we haven't gotten to the study, we've only done the overview.
Okay, um, George, did you just want to respond to that? I saw you got off mute for a second. George, you're on mute. You're still on mute.
All right, uh, are you, Fred, are you referring to the one on Palomino?
Yes, sir. I don't know exactly what it is, it's, it's a home trailer, or-
Well, it's, it's a trailer, it's not a mobile, it's not considered a mobile home, because it's on wheels, so it's a recreational trailer, which you're allowed to store as long as it's on, it's on wheels. And that one's actually to be moved soon. Uh, there was someone there that was guarding the property, you're correct about that.
I'm not, I'm not arguing, I was just trying to explain to Doug that there are trailers in the town.
Correct, and, and another aspect of that is, you're actually allowed to put a mobile home on a vacant piece of property if you get permission from that and you get a permit that allows you, if you're building a house, and it entitles you for one year, it expires after a year. So I've had people that I've done construction for, that they pulled the permit for a mobile home. Some of them are, are recreational vehicles, or they have wheels, other ones have been, like, permanent mobile homes that they would be placed there, and then removed prior to the CEO. So it is a legal thing that you're allowed to do, and it's a limited time use only.
All right, Doug, up to you. There's one on my street that's been there about three years.
Wow, that's another case.
Yes, you're allowed to, I, I'm well aware of what, uh, George just said and what he was talking about. I was under the impression that, uh, that we were talking about, uh, mobile homes and people that didn't have a residential house on the property, and a trailer was being used as a residence. And in some cases, that may apply if there's a barn for a caretaker or something like that. But as a second, uh, residential unit without a home there, you're not. But if it's on wheels, like George says, you can own them, you can park them on your property, you just can't stay in them. You can use them for the construction project for the length of a time, but, uh, other than that, you're not supposed to stay in them, if you're just owning them, you're taking them on a road trip.
There is one other mobile home that I'm aware of, and that's on the church on Griffin, where they're using it as a daycare, but that was, I think, a special exception, if I'm wrong.
Fine, I learned something, I'm not trying to stir up anything.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're correct, you're correct.
Good. All right, hey, John? John, I saw you put up your hand, did you have a question?
Yeah, uh, regarding, uh, slide number eight, commercial. The, uh, the town square footage for total commercial is, uh, three thirty-six, two oh nine, square feet. And I was just wondering the methodology, because, you know, most of our commercial is, uh, industrial, uh, not industrial, but, uh, nurseries and accoutrements. So when we're assessing square footage, you know, a CBS building is very easy, but we have some places that have large tiki huts, we have, uh, multiple containers on site. I mean, are these, uh, these also added in there, uh, in addition to, uh, the square footage of just say a CBS building? They are being, uh, used commercially.
Sure. Well, you do have some large commercial buildings that are technically in the, uh, in the town. I think it's either a Home Depot or Lowe's, I'm sorry, I can't recall which one it is. And they pay quite a, Lowe's. So you do have, you do have some, uh, some retail and other stuff. If it's a nursery and it's an otherwise accessible, uh, structure, then it's based upon the square footage that the property appraiser's office has for that structure. If that helps, uh, no matter how big or small. And if there's multiple commercial structures on the parcel, they pay the assembled square footage of each of them. Now, sometimes you will have a warehouse, I'm sorry?
Anything that's accessible by the tax assessor goes into this, this three thirty-six number.
Correct. Now, sometimes you might have a mixed use, where you actually have a warehouse and commercial. Uh, so those are calculated separately. This is what we were calling in the mixed use or the S category that the property appraiser has. They're overrides that we calculate manually. Um, so they pick up whatever the warehouse is, it picks up that rate, whatever the commercial is, it picks up that rate.
So, uh, some, some of these properties use forty-foot containers, and they may have several of them that they use for storage and stuff. Are those getting included into the, no?
No, not, not likely. I would only hedge, and I'm not aware of any, you know, sometimes these port containers can be turned into permanent structures. So if, if it was, it was converted to, yeah. Well, when I say, uh, uh, permanent structure, I mean, it's bolted down, you know, it meets the hurricane code, it's actually been converted from a, a port container to an office or a house or whatever. There may be some of that out there, I don't recall there being, being any, but that doesn't mean there aren't. But who determines that is the property appraiser's office, not us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, um, Fred, I, I think I'll, I'll go back to you. I know, um, like, when I was asking my questions, and I think some other folks, when they were asking their questions, um, I was doing a combination of both what was on the presentation and what I had seen in the report prior to the presentation. So if you have a number of items you want to bring forth from the report itself, um, why don't, if you're okay with it, why don't we jump into that now?
Sure. Uh, on the report, page two, second line, uh, part of our town is agriculture, fourteen percent. We use the word muc, muc, M-U-C-H. And I don't think-
I'm sorry, what page was that, Fred? Fourteen?
Page two.
No, you can sit, oh, page two. Uh, you know, you can stare at these things a million times and not pick up something.
I'm just worried about the timeframe, I don't, I don't want to be, uh, much, where the town's, much of the town's tax base is agriculture, fourteen percent. Uh, I don't think fourteen percent is much. I think it's incorrect use of the word M-U-C-H. It's, it's matter, but, that's fine, it's matter, you're going to, accept it or not, page four. Uh, is that four?
This would be the, uh, allocation of the budget, table A on my page four.
It's the table, yeah, okay. Forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars annually for assessment expenses. That, that doesn't sound logical, I'm not-
No, well, all right, so there's a couple of things. Number one, this is just an estimate, whatever the actual costs are from year to year will go in there. I think what you had this year, when they, uh, and Marty can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, what you thought you would pay for the study came in a lot cheaper, so you're not going to pay the forty-one. But this is just mostly an illustration of what the, how the budget would get, uh, allocated out for fiscal year twenty. Now, for fiscal year twenty-one, you may not have some of these expenses, you're going to have to base it upon whatever your budget is. And unfortunately, the way that works is, you're going to have to send out initial notices before your budget's adopted. So, you know, it's gonna, it's always hard to nail it down exactly, but I believe that's where that number came from.
It was more of a question for Marty anyway, just forty-one thousand, one hundred every year.
Yes, no, no, it, it, it won't comprise that, uh, moving forward, Fred. That was the thirty-nine thousand we budgeted, uh, with the ITB, the RFP, the, the ITB. Uh, it came in at twenty-one thousand, so significant savings there. But this goes, like Chris mentioned, budget to budget, and
Yes, sir.
we, we will only allocate costs that are reflected in the next year's twenty-one budget.
Good, okay.
Although to make you feel better, I, I kind of feel like I spent forty-one thousand dollars worth of time on this.
I could agree from the town I spent, but I don't, yeah, but anyway. Uh, okay, page five. Uh, four lines above table B. And this is probably a political comment to our esteemed council members. Uh, those costs would annually increase based upon a four-point-five percent overall inflation rate. I assure all of you that our inflation rate is not four-point-five percent. And those of us who have retired and are living on fixed incomes, we're not yielding four-point-five percent. I played with you to not give out contracts with four-point-five percent increases automatically. We used to give increases at the rate of inflation or a cap. We seem to have drifted apart and are generously given all of our con-, not, it's, it's bespoke. Some of our contracts, such as the fire, uh, contract with Davy, at, at such an increase. So more of a political statement, but the inflation rate's not four, four-point-five. Uh, page six. And this is more of, uh, clarification, you've done a good job at the end, and I, I should start with a much better read than the report from twenty-eleven, Chris, thank you. Uh, you did accomplish that.
Thank you, Fred.
That was one of our objectives. Uh, you, you stated, uh, the town has chosen, uh, where is it now? The town has chosen the assessment rate. And later on in the report, you, you explained the alternatives, but for the reader of the report, you might want to, uh, hear the, this last half sentence before the determination of benefits. The town has chosen to recover all of its fire fees from this, this assessment. Uh, versus, you know, the other alternatives, which you do cover later on. Okay, uh, page eleven. Oh, we've already covered it. I too was wondering, it's the twenty, two hundred and twenty-one parcels. All right, we covered, I didn't think of canal stuff and everything. Uh, fourteen, we're okay. Okay, page twenty. Okay, on the narrative, in the very beginning, we have two fire stations. Uh, ninety-one and one-twelve. I've never called them by the number, I call them the one on Volunteer and the one on Griffin. And then at the end, we've got only one-twelve and eighty-two. So I had to make a phone call to the fire stations to find out what, what the mystery is. Ninety-one, we covered in the narrative at the beginning, but we left off of this chart. Eighty-two, we didn't cover in the narrative at the beginning. It's my understanding now that it, eighty-two and one-twelve are sort of together, although your chart depicts them accurately. Eighty-two is the town's volunteer. Uh, one-twelve is the, uh, Davy's station at the same location. But on the chart, you've left off ninety-one.
It's, it's an interesting observation, because this organizational table went through a few revisions. Originally, it was as you described, and I think what the town is trying to convey here, uh, and not stepping on toes, is how the volunteer firefighting, firefighters are integrated with the professional firefighters. The, um, chain of command is a little bit different, because, uh, they both go through town administration, but the volunteers apparently have a separate board. I'm out, I'm not married to an organizational table, uh, so if you guys have comments on it and you want us to change it, I'm fine with whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm clarifying, I'm clarifying for the reader.
Well, no, it, it's actually, it, it, yeah, it's, it's an important point, because we're trying to explain, and I don't know that the table does a great job at it, um, compared to a prior version, but we're trying to explain how the staffing works, and why, how many people you had on each piece of equipment was what we were trying to do. But then that seemed to be touching on, uh, uh, stepping on toes with the volunteers, so we didn't want to do that. Uh, but what we, what the organizational table was, was originally designed to do was give support to how the personnel were allocated in the study. And it showed by, by station, by, by type of equipment or apparatus, how many people and what type of people were on each piece of equipment. And that's one of the, that's one of the supporting evidences we had to get towards the sixty, forty split for fire versus EMS. So we'll, uh, I'll talk with the, the town some more about that and see what we can do, Fred.
I could make a suggestion, just add station ninety-one in the blue box on the, on the bottom left, station one, ninety-one and station one-twelve. And you've accomplished that, and then in the narrative, at the beginning, mention station eighty-two. Because if you're reading it, it stations ninety-one and one-twelve. When you get to the box, ninety-two is there, sort of ninety-one, or eighty-two, I'm sorry. So I understand what you're telling me, I'm just trying to help correct it for the reader to follow along and-
Yeah, well, uh, like, like I said, this went through, uh, several versions, so we'll, we'll go back and look at it again. I, I think it does need to be cleared up, particularly for the, for the body counts, or the personnel counts, body count.
That's my viewpoint, and while you're saying several versions, uh, this is the only version, there's a committee member I've seen, and it's somewhat confusing to be on a committee and asked to, to support it, and there's grass one right over your head, boom, boom. I think we should have been included in the drafts and the comments, even if we weren't allowed to express ourselves. Okay, on to the big question, the survey. I don't know who the survey is from, I don't know what the purpose of the survey, I don't know why it was done. I consider it outside interference. It, uh, should have gone to the chair, it should have been voted on by the committee if we're going to do it. We're to abide by the Robert rules of order. The first question is contrary to Robert rules of order. You're asking us to re-vote on something that we voted on Monday, March second, twenty twenty, it was a ten-zero vote. Someone's asking us to re-vote, you can't do that unless you're one of the people who voted on it. Brings it up as a motion, gets a second, it passes to re-vote. I'm okay to re-vote, I'm not okay by voting on a survey. You and I have discussed, I complained to Marty about the survey, he sent me to you, you and I discussed the survey. It's vague, the question number one is confusing. I think ten of us interpreted it ten different ways. And spoiler alert for the rest of you, I'm one of the two people who didn't fill it out, I refused to participate. Uh, another question is mathematically incorrect, uh, the last question. So, and then the chart we had on the survey, my goodness gracious, that was real peculiar. That was real peculiar. I see that's been dropped since the 4:30 version. That's good news. I respectfully suggest that we eliminate the survey from the report. It's done inappropriately. It's done, I think, outside the Robert rules of order. It wasn't discussed. Why have a committee unless you're going to exchange ideals and comments? I learn from one another. Maybe I can help someone learn something. But a survey in the mail that's confusing, worded poorly, grammatically incorrect, mathematically incorrect, without going through the chairman, without having a vote, without having a discussion. I, I just, I found the whole survey of nonsense.
Well, I respect your opinion on that. I think it was an attempt to deal with the COVID-19 problem and getting together in part and also trying to acknowledge the committee's efforts and find out how it eventually shook, shook out. From the report point of view, you know, we don't really feel like it adds a whole lot to the report. It was, it's an addendum as kind of backup information, but we don't want to make it seem like, you know, we, we valued the committee's opinions. We thought that some of their suggestions were defensible and valid and we incorporated those into the report. But we don't want to give the readers the impression that it was a, an assessment by committee more than, I think it was probably better explained as community members who, who felt like the way the assessment was currently being done in the current year was unfair and that there were better ways to do it. And to that extent, I think it was very valuable. But I'm not married to keeping it as part of the report at all if the committee doesn't like seeing it.
I'm only one vote on the committee. There's nine others. So to have the floor, I just, I don't thought it contributes anything whatsoever to the report.
Um, well, it doesn't, doesn't really-
I'd like to jump in there for a second. Can I just jump in there for a second? So just to follow up on that, Chris, let me just kind of flat out ask you directly, did that affect the content within the report outside the survey itself? Did, did it affect that? Well, I'll leave it there. Did, did it affect it?
Um, no, but I, you know, I think part of the problem with the committee was there were, there was unequal discussion as far as committee members go. Uh, I think some felt very strongly one way, some didn't really speak up too much, except maybe outside the meeting to us. I don't think the, the survey is much different than what I gathered from the committee meetings, to be honest with you. I think we were looking forward to having more committee meetings, but that wasn't able to happen because of COVID-19. So I think the origins of this is really more towards trying to get final comments from the committee and in a structured way. And then, yeah, it could have been better and I'll take responsibility for that. But at the end of the day, it doesn't give support to the, to the report. It's just, I think we included it because we felt like it, it would be, well, we know how Fred felt because he was not shy about telling us before. But, but I think, I, you know, I think the people did put a lot of effort into the committee. They volunteered for it. We tried to give acknowledgement that the committee did have some help in this. Well, like they drafted it. I mean, we can't, we can't do that to them. You know, but we, we did feel that the input was particularly as it related to the farm structures and the barns and the stables. I thought that was extremely helpful in, in focusing on how we were going to go forward with this. I don't think anyone really cared about the commercial and all that other stuff, other than the commercial isn't applied to the barns and stables. But I think that really helped us identify it. I know there was some, uh, it wasn't any unanimity on multiple dwelling units necessarily, but you know, not everyone's going to agree on everything. And we, at the end of the day, we have to use our judgment on what we think is the most defensible and from what we hear from people. So I'm fine, and the attorney that, that works with me is fine on, you know, assessing otherwise assessable barn structures. We are concerned that, and Fred and I have had this discussion, we are concerned that people will realize that they can go down and unify their title and avoid some costs with very little effort. And to the extent they do that, after you kind of count on that revenue, the first year may be a little rough. After that, you know, works itself out, then you'll be fine. So I would encourage the town to maybe build a little contingency in there for what we think's going to happen or what we are billing versus what actually may turn out to happen. Because Joe's going to find out from Bill that, hey, I just saved myself $500. And Joe's going to say, oh, well, how'd you do it? And, you know, in small towns and big towns, neighbors know and it spreads like wildfire. So that's the only thing that concerns me with this change in methodology is that I think to some extent, people are gonna find a way that, that they can legally, you know, reduce their, their assessment. But it's, in the scheme of things, it's not going to be a big dollar amount. So if they choose to leave it alone, and there will be people who choose to leave it alone, they do that currently, then fine. If they want to do it, fine. I mean, you're just trying to be fair to people. So if you have two neighbors who have what looks to all appearances, the same lot and the same house and the same barn, but when you look at it legally, one has one parcel for all of it and the other has two parcels, one with the structure on each one. You know, they're going to sit over it by having a beer by the pool. They're going to go, whoa, my bill was this. Well, why are you paying twice as much? So, and they'll figure it out, but that's fine. I'm just worried that initially that may happen more, more than we think. And then financially, the town's going to have to, you know, suck it up the first year or whatever. But other than that, getting back to the survey, you know, I'm not married with leaving it in the report. I think it was done out of respect for the committee, but I don't think some of them took it that way. So, but, you know, it, the discussions with the committee either through the survey or during the two meetings we had or the phone calls I had with people. You know, it really comes down to this issue by and large of the barns and what's fair and what's equitable. And we think we've come up with a solution that was actually very much influenced by the committee's discussion, both in organized meetings and outside those meetings. So I think that was, excuse me, particularly helpful in this particular assessment because
Okay, all right.
Southwest ranches isn't like a lot of places, so I, I think this is a fair way of doing it.
Okay, so, um, thanks, Chris. So I think that, I don't know if there, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm pretty ambivalent whether we leave it in or, or take it out. I don't think it's the same quality as the discussion that we have when we're in the room all together. But on the other hand, I kind of feel like more information is always better than less information. So, so I, I can go either way on it. I'm not, I'm not tied into it. I don't know if anybody else feels strongly one way or the other on it as far as wanting to pull it out. So we're not hearing anything there. I think we'll, I, I don't, I don't hear like a motion to pull it out. Yeah, yeah, I'll get back to you. So, yeah, go ahead Fred.
Real quick, I'm not trying to be a bully. I, I'm only one-tenth of the committee and I am outspoken and, and, you know, I do that. It just, it, it just reminds me a little bit of Steve of the COP board last year. You know, later on, it was said, well, that was misinterpreted. I took the survey that way from the time I first read it and I called Marty and I said, I, I don't want to do this. And he said, well, talk to Chris. Well, I talked to Chris. I think until he got tired of me. But I'm one vote and, and I can't call the other committee members. And I certainly yield and you could do around robin. It's not going to change my life if it's in or out. I just felt like if we discussed it, it would have been different than sending out a survey. It's sort of like being on a, on a, on a jury. You're sitting in a room and do a blind vote and have no discussion at all, and an hour later do a blind vote. Well, nothing's changed. What we're missing is the dialogue. I thought we had good dialogue. I agree with Chris. Lori and I are a little more outspoken than, than a couple of people. But Steve, you run a good meeting. I think everyone had the opportunity to, to talk. So that's it. I yield. Thank you.
Well, if I could just say though, at, at the, at the time we had to stop meeting in person, I don't think the governor's office, and I could be wrong about this, but I don't think everyone was ramped up for these types of meetings that we're currently having. I think if this was, existed and was allowed back then, it would be a whole different story because we'd still have the dialogue, but with feedback, you know, but I don't think it existed at the time, to be honest with you Fred. I don't think we were able to do it. I think governments ramped up pretty quickly finding these solutions with Zoom and WebEx and all this other stuff. But at that particular point in time, I don't think it was on the table. I think it came out right after that to a large extent, but not at that point in time.
Right, so let me, let me just open it up, let me just open it up one more time to the committee. Does anybody feel like this? They, they, some, anybody else that would like to remove this section from the report?
I'll tell you what, I'll go ahead and make the motion to remove the survey.
Okay.
Who then?
Fred, you can second that?
I'll second, I'll second. Thank you, James.
Okay, let's have some discussion on the motion to remove that section from the report.
No?
I would have pros and cons to it because I'm a little confused because at the end of the day, my interpretation of it wasn't because of COVID-19. It would have, would have never happened if it wasn't for COVID-19. So it's public information. That's my opinion. I'm neither here nor there.
Well, let me say this. Some of those questions were confusing. And I actually called Marty. But, you know, let's throw it out there. If somebody doesn't like it, then let's, it does, it's not going to affect anything. It's not going to affect the numbers. It's not going to affect the changes. It's just going to affect the questions that we answered by mail.
Yep.
So you got a motion out there. Do we have, you know?
I, I made some comments when I filled out the survey as well, but a couple of the questions were confusing. So I, I get, I get what you're saying.
Well, number one, we can't vote on, on question one to a survey. That's Robert rules of order. Uh, the question is mathematically incorrect. We can pull it up and look at it. But we're changing, we're reducing commercial into residential. It's going to increase commercial but lower residential. The question says we're going to increase residential. So mathematically, that question's incorrect. Question one, we can't vote on. One of the questions combines one and two, so that's invalid. The three questions are, are, are invalid. So then the survey consists of two odd questions.
Did you have a comment Jen?
No, I feel it was shame. I feel it was confusing. Even though I read over it, over it, it didn't make much sense.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
Jim Albritton.
Yeah, go ahead Jen.
Yeah, Fred, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Fred, let me ask you a quick question. If we leave it in there, people can read it. They can see who the chair, or who the committee was and stuff. They may or may not understand it, but at least they'll see that we went through the process to do something the right way. And there it is. It's what you and I talked about many times, transparency. Right, wrong, indifferent. At least we made the effort and it shows people, as far as I'm concerned, that we did do something to try and make it better for them.
Well, I think the fact that they acknowledged us is sufficient. The survey, the, the questions, the recap, we've already, the final version already threw out that funny chart. It's just the addition of the, the survey questions, but that's fine. Again, I'm not trying to, you know, push anyone. It just, it was a confusing outside influence survey.
All right, well, why don't we, is there any other comments on including the survey? Chris, do you have a comment on that?
Well, I was just going to suggest that we can rewrite this section and talk about the committee's meetings and things that maybe discuss that and just take away the survey. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. You know, I think the committee needs to be acknowledged. I don't think it hurts and probably helps that the input there helped direct the, you know, the assessment methodology towards what I think we all agree is a reasonable conclusion. So, you know, I, I do think that we were trying to acknowledge the committee and the efforts that you put into it. So I would hate to take, you know, all that out, maybe just lop off the, you know, the, your survey and it's always part of the public record anyway, if anyone wants to come into town hall and grab it. And I don't know that the survey really adds a lot to the, to the report. So I have no problem taking that out and that maybe rewriting this section a little bit.
Well, that's a good point that the survey is still available. If somebody wants to dig in there and get it separately, they can still get the survey. So, but it would not be in the official report at all. I think that, that may be a good, good way to look at it, a compromise across the board. All right, any other comments before we vote? All right, let's go ahead and vote. I don't have a roll call list in front of me. I don't know. Russell, do you have that in front of you? I don't want to put you on the spot here.
I do not, but I can, I can see all the participants just calling, you know, basically from what I see on, on, on the screen.
Okay, so just a recap that we're voting, a, a vote of yes means that we would remove it from the report. A vote of no means we would retain it in the report.
Okay, so I'm going to go around the room and just call on the committee members, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, some of you are muted, so when I get to you, if you can just unmute yourselves. So we'll start with you Steve, Steve Brenkruss.
Yes.
James Starkweather?
Yes.
Fred Cox?
Yes.
Jennifer Dactin?
Yes.
John Eastman?
Yes.
Mike Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
George Morris?
Yes.
Lori Parish?
Lori text-
Lori Parish?
Lori texted me yes. Apparently her mic is not working, but she's a yes.
Okay, and Jim Albritton?
Reluctantly, yes.
Okay, so unanimous.
Thank you, Russell. All right, so I think, I think we've gone through the report. Before I turn it back over to the mayor, is there any other comments from any committee members that they would like to make?
I'd like to say thank you to the council for, for my participation and stuff. I enjoyed working with everybody and got to learn a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, good point Jen. Thank, thank you.
Thank you for me too.
Yep, great job. Okay, Mayor, turn it back over to you.
Steve, appreciate it. I guess I want to say thank you for all the time and effort everybody put in regarding getting to this point. And I guess I'll make the modification and changes and it'll be on what, the July 9th meeting? Is that what this will be on, Andy?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else that they want to bring up related to this?
Guys, I just wanted to throw out a thank you as well. I mean, this was a, another long process, but I think we got to a good place. Thank you.
All right, well, it looks like we're all on the same page for the interview result and look forward to getting this wrapped up.
Happy Fourth of July, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Be safe. Be safe. Great job. We appreciate everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Enjoy your fire. Enjoy your fireworks. Enjoy the fireworks, guys.
No fireworks.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
All right, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you. All right.
Bye.
All right.